There were a couple of days ago in the summer. Okay, okay.
I think we got two different things.
There's lots of different things going on.
Yeah, this one's one thing and this is something else. This gets me other than cold.
It's nice. Well, first day we were there it was cold, but then it warmed up.
He's got contacts.
Okay. My nephew has two lake houses up there, so it was good. It was better than it was down here.
Does it have a name?
It must be because of the way that it's.
Well, it does, but doesn't want to share it with us.
Yeah, sure. Brown's file.
Put it in your special file.
Yeah, okay.
I expected it to be a little smoky, but it wasn't at all.
Oh, it's just spread out all over here. Sorry, Perry.
Uh, that's tonight's comic relief. I said, just.
You too.
Of us and what we should do away and stuff like that.
That's what we said.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
They didn't sign it, so I don't know.
But that's pretty.
There was a.
There's some that just came in my head that I was.
Yeah, we're gonna get together.
What is happening? Make me part of it over there.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
One of the parts that they came in here and said it was.
You ready to play?
We're ready.
You'd like to run.
I'd like to call the July Common Council meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call?
Clinker?
Here.
Nargie?
Here.
Snyder?
Present.
Reynolds?
Here.
Wies?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Allers Meyer?
Here.
Warren present.
Thank you. Our first order of business is a public hearing for Resolution 2023-19. I'll entertain a motion to recess for that. Mr. Clinker?
So moved.
Mrs. Nargie?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
A resolution, sorry. That's fine. Resolution 2023-19, a resolution declaring the designation of a certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application for a property tax abatement at Kentland Bank Real Estate.
Any public comment regarding this resolution? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene. Mr. Snyder?
So moved.
Mr. Reynolds?
Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Onto the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the June meeting, Mrs. Hessian Wies?
I move we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 5th, 2023.
Mr. Brown?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the approval of those minutes as communicated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Presentation and disposal of claims?
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications?
There are none.
Reports of city offices on file in the city clerk's office?
Police Department and report 2022, complete maintenance monthly May, renew department monthly May, and water works department monthly May.
Thank you. Those reports are available online if you would like to view them in depth. Ordinance is for second reading this evening. We have ordinance 2023-23.
An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lafayette, Indiana, annexing certain territory into the City of Lafayette, Indiana, 2023. Lafayette Southeast Voluntary Annexation Carr Family, three.
Mrs. Williams?
I move we hear and approve ordinance 2023-23 on final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. Moved and seconded. Yes, please come forward.
Good evening. Ryan Mundon with Riley and Teeter and Schreier here on behalf of the petitioner. I want to reiterate this is a super voluntary annexation. All requirements of the statute have been met. We believe this is a positive step forward for our client's property as well as City Lafayette, and we look forward to continued collaboration and cooperation with the city. So we respectfully request your approval on second reading and be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I have a question. Just to make sure, how long were you in negotiations with the City of Dayton on this?
We have been, we were at, let me pull my timeline just so I don't misstate, I believe it was in 2021, we submitted a request to sign a will serve letter at Dayton Town Council, and that request was not granted. So since at least '21, my office has been in discussions with Dayton.
And what was the major sticking point of why you couldn't come to an agreement? Was there one particular thing?
Primarily the current zoning of the property. During that public meeting when we requested the will serve letter be signed, the discussion kind of spiraled out of control to the point that some members of the town council were interested in acquiring the property to build a park that they couldn't afford, and that's when kind of the wheels came off at that meeting and discussions ended.
Okay, so then when you came to the City of Lafayette, we didn't give you a special deal or anything. We just said it would be okay. We'll put in the infrastructure.
Right, there's been no deal making or promises of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
To begin the public comment portion for this ordinance, we have a letter that the clerk will read into record.
Hi, the tone of the open letter would be seen as hilarious, but it was penned with seriousness and sincerity by an anonymous person. I hope that tens of thousands of Lafayette residents take cues from their trusty elected officials when it comes to economic development results. There are two key points raised in the open letter. Lafayette is willing to annex land and the utility agreements have been in place for decades. However, it is important to note that the open letter fails to mention a significant detail. The Carr family actually volunteered to be annexed by Lafayette due to the Dayton Town Council's prolonged meddling in approving the use of their land. While other matters may be raised by various individuals, the heart of the voluntary annexation lies in the question of who the land is being sold to and what their plans for the use are. Moreover, I wish to clarify that the term exclusive does not appear in the reference document. The majority of the nearby residents have shown limited interest in being annexed by Dayton. Therefore, it is reassuring to know that the individuals residing in the Pishaw Drive and Adams Road need not be concerned about being targeted by the Dayton Town Council. Lastly, I believe that there are numerous areas where the Town of Dayton, the City of Lafayette, and Tippecanoe County can and should collaborate. It is essential for these entities to work together on various activities. Let us remember that the tail shall never wag the dog. Voluntarily submitted, Dave Langinger of 764 Shady Lane, Dayton, Indiana.
Thank you. We'll accept other public comments, remembering to state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes.
Good evening. Chris Wisher. I'm an attorney with Sol Keenan Ogden in Indianapolis and Evansville. And I'm here representing the Town of Dayton. You'll hear from a few of them. It's the fourth time we've been here to talk with you about this annexation. I know we've written several letters and you all I know have read those and you're familiar with all of those facts. A couple of things I want to clear up. The Town of Dayton has been, this has been a longtime vision of the town, of the region, for this to become part of the Town of Dayton. Going back to those utility contracts of which you've seen, you know, when I was speaking with your attorney, she asked a good question about, I was asking whether the city intended to serve utilities to this property after it's annexed, given the longstanding contracts that say this is Dayton's utility jurisdiction. Would Dayton still be interested in serving it if it's annexed into Lafayette? It was a good question because it kind of restates the point of those contracts and that utility jurisdiction. Annexation and utility service are so intertwined that it would be surprising for a town to want to serve within another city or vice versa. Those contracts were in place when this property was clearly envisioned to be the growth area of Dayton. Where else is Dayton to grow if not immediately adjoining to the north or to the south? And if Lafayette comes across the interstate, where does that end? Where does, is Lafayette going to surround Dayton? At what point can Dayton, is Dayton allowed to grow? Most towns would have the ability to chart their own path, to control their own destiny, to work with landowners in an arms-length way. And because Dayton has the unfortunate situation of being sit next to Lafayette, adjoining Lafayette, Dayton does not have that ability. That's being taken away. When you annex this property, you will usurp Dayton's jurisdiction. You will throw out those old, those contracts that are still in place. Dayton has made investments. You know, in 2019, there was a TIF, joint TIF created for that area that included part of the town, included part of the county. That, there were bonds issued to, for the installation of a water line that was installed to acquire land for a road that was acquired. And they made all of those steps with an idea that one day this property would be annexed. And yet here we are with the property owner petitioning the City of Lafayette. Now, when we came here before, it was, we were made to believe that this came about very recently for nothing of the City of Lafayette's doing, that this was a property owner decision, but letters we've seen suggest that this has been going on for quite a while. Dayton didn't know about it until earlier this year. So here we are. We've been here four times. We've told you all of the reasons why we would like the city to not annex this property, and this is our final attempt to do that.
Concluding statement, please.
So let me just ask, what are you going to do? What would you do if you were the city in the other shoes? What would you do if you were the Town of Dayton? Would you put your tail between your legs and would you just walk away and allow Lafayette to annex this and the next property and the next property and the next property? And where does it end? At what point do they stand up? They're asking you to do the right thing and say no to the annexation. If you choose to proceed, Dayton's gonna have to do what it needs to do to fight.
Thank you, sir. Your time has lapsed.
Thank you.
Any other public comment regarding this ordinance?
My name's Mark Burmester. I live 264 Washington Street, Dayton, Indiana. I'm on the town board and I'm the president of the Redevelopment Commission. I thought you might like to see this photo. This is the photo of the spirit of our Dayton parade we had in Dayton last month. Part of the, part of our family of 1,400 residents. They are the future of our town. To ensure that future, Dayton made an investment in our town many years ago. That investment included land purchases and infrastructure to service the Carr property. Property that you're being asked to take out of our control tonight. There are many reasons why you should be hesitant to give your approval of this annexation. Foremost is image. It has long been understood that someday the Carr property would be a part of Dayton. You know the written utility agreement that Dayton has with Lafayette to provide water and wastewater service to the Carr property and additional properties. And while Carr's attorneys have manipulated the narrative to justify your breaching that agreement, it is still our agreement. And rightfully so. If you chose to ignore this agreement, why should anyone trust an agreement with Lafayette? The cars don't need you. They're only using you. They need utilities, which Dayton has agreed to provide. Utilities which Dayton has the right to provide. Hopefully you have read the agreement and understand the Carr property is within our jurisdiction. I know Eileen Hessian has read it because she signed it. I know if you are wise, you will vote no to this annexation because you understand that annexing this property violates the very reason the agreement was written in the first place. You know that the cars want you to build a road for them. They want to spend $10,700,000 of your taxpayer money to make their property more marketable. Translated, that means to make them richer. Yet two years ago, when the Carr's attorney influenced the county commissioners to rezone the heavy industrial against the wishes of the area plan staff, the Town of Dayton, and the land use plan, they didn't need the road. Today, while they make it appear that they are giving you this great gift, they are only using the taxpayers of Lafayette and Tippecanoe County to make their property more marketable. They should be held to their word and made to build their own road. If you truly want to do his best for his citizens, you should save your taxpayers' money. Did you know that Lafayette's city tax rate is 126% higher than Dayton's? Our citizens and businesses pay less than half of those in Lafayette. I'll bet that's something the cars don't want to tell their prospective buyer. Perhaps you should stop giving to the privileged and start giving back to the people who made them that way. The conclusion is this. This has been a well orchestrated charade that has made you the judge and jury. Your voting yes to this annexation will tarnish the image of Lafayette's integrity with the lawsuit that ultimately confirms Dayton's right to utility jurisdiction in the area. Your yes vote justifies the confusion created by the cars as a means to an end for their benefit. And most importantly, if you vote yes, you become complicit in taking away the future of Dayton.
Any other public comment this evening?
Cindy Marsh, 749 Shady Lane in Dayton. I'd like to address, first of all, some of the misconceptions, some of the misinformation that was stated earlier about why Dayton didn't annex or why the will serve letter. As Mr. Mundon referred back to the 2021 request to do the will serve letter after they had just rezoned the land to I-3 against the wishes of the Town of Dayton and against the area plan staff recommendation, as Mark just said. Just this year, when we realized that, not because anybody informed us, but when the town found out that Carr was coming to Lafayette to be annexed, our attorney and members of our town council met with Mr. Mundon and Mr. Carr, and they were told that the town would accept I-3, that, you know, that was fine. That's not the reason they're coming to Lafayette is because of the I-3 zoning. They're coming because Lafayette has promised them a road. It was said right here, just a couple meetings ago, that they came to Lafayette because they wanted a road and Lafayette would give it to them. So that begs the question, why does, do they think they're getting the road? Who told them that? And most importantly, what are the details of that? Who is going to pay for it? We all know the Carr family isn't going to pay for it. It's obvious that this was all planned way ahead of the petition, way before the petition was ever filed. Who planned it and why isn't that story being told? Is something illegal going on or just something dirty and underhanded? Something is definitely going on, though. So I just want to say from my heart that I am so disappointed in my fellow Democrats, including the mayor. We are supposed to be a party of rules and norms, of consideration of and respect for others. We're supposed to act with integrity and our word, our agreements and our contracts can be counted on. We're supposed to have the moral high ground, to put people over politics and turn our backs on corrupting influences. Sadly, those words don't describe a lot of people here. Lafayette City Council is acting like colonizers, seizing control of an area that has long been recognized as under the jurisdiction of the Town of Dayton. Instead of respecting and honoring longstanding agreements and contracts, Lafayette Democrats are in step with their Republican counterparts and have treated Dayton and its residents like they're all a smelly insignificant nuisance, not as neighbors and friends worthy of being treated with dignity and respect. I have no illusions that any letters or speeches will change the outcome today, but I just wanted to say what is in my heart.
Mr. Mundon, as far as I'm aware, Lafayette has not agreed to provide a road. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, we're back there scratching our heads as well. We're not sure what road they're referring to. There's been no promise for Lafayette to build a road. There's been no request for Lafayette to build a road.
There's no funding provided for them. Yes.
No clue what they're talking about.
Any other public comment?
That's wrong. Carr stood out there and demanded he said he's going to Lafayette if we don't build him a road at the meeting with Mundon. Mundon, you were sitting.
Can you approach the microphone, please?
He said, I demand a road or I'm going to Lafayette.
He's never demanded a road as far as we're aware from the City of Lafayette.
You guys knew it because we told you.
But we've not agreed to provide a road.
We'll see.
It's with the Redevelopment Commission. It is documented.
Mr. Carson? See Mr. Carson here? There he is. Have you received any news of this?
Yeah, that's Carson, economic development director for the City of Lafayette. I have not received any information on that. I do not know anything about it. And in my position, I would probably want to be one of the first people who would know and would be approached by something about this. And this has not been, I have not.
So you've not drafted any proposal or requested funding for a road of this property?
No, I've not received a request, you know, nor have I put anything forward for something like this.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
So would you be willing to postpone this vote so I can show you what I have?
Madam President, may I ask a question here? Ask the city attorney, first of all, the utility services agreement, you have looked at that, is that correct?
I have looked at those, correct.
My name was evoked here, so I feel like I need to speak up about that. I'm assuming you're talking about me attesting something when I was the city clerk. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Those agreements, then, you have looked at as a city attorney? Those were drafted by the city attorney at that time. How do you find those to be?
So those agreements do not address any issues regarding annexation. They also do not have any exclusivity language within them.
Okay, so what would that affect as far as the annexation is concerned, as far as our agreements with Dayton and water and sewage? Anything?
In my opinion, no.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2023-23?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance is for first reading. We begin with ordinance 2023-25.
An ordinance for the appropriation of a local option highway user tax funds, County Wheel Tax Fund number 2490.
Mr. Clinker?
I move we hear ordinance 2023-20-25 on first reading.
Mrs. Nargie?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Deal?
Good evening. Jeremy Deal, City Controller. You have before you a request for appropriation of $1 million from the Local Option Highway Use Tax Fund. That is comprised of cert tax and wheel tax. Should I elaborate now? Alrighty. In accordance with state statute, cert tax is imposed on most of the passenger vehicles we commonly drive today, less than 11,000 pounds. Wheel tax is imposed on larger and commercial vehicles. The BMV collects tax when vehicles are registered and then submits to the county auditor. The auditor distributes those monies monthly to eligible recipients, cities and towns. In counties with population of over 50,000, that distribution to cities and towns is weighted 60% based on the population of the city or town, 40% of the weighting based on road mileage within the municipal boundaries. So our city's cert tax and wheel tax revenues in recent years have been rather consistent, somewhere between $950,000 and $1 million. Through June of this year, we've collected a little over $490,000. That combined with our beginning and uncommitted cash balance in the wheel tax fund at the beginning of the year, we now have $621,000 in current resources. The city engineer has compiled a list of planned paving projects. I distributed that to council members prior to the meeting. Some of these projects will be funded by wheel tax, but providing the fit and making a cost allocation is a little project the controller's office and the engineer will work together to achieve. In the interest of simplicity, we'll make every effort to assign paving project costs to a funding source that can fully bear the project cost. This to avoid splitting the cost of a particular project among various funded resources. So some of the smaller to medium projects are likely to land in the wheel tax fund. Likely projects will be street projects, South 24th Street, from Bryce Street to Cassuth, Kason Street from 18th to Earl Avenue, South 5th Street from Cassuth to the south, to a dead end, Fairmont Street from 4th to 5th Street, and also possible Vinton Woods concrete and paving projects. The list I provided you is a bit more expansive. Some other smaller projects may also be allocated to the wheel tax fund, but that will be refined in the future as we accomplish that work and assess the total cost of those projects. So with that, I respectfully request your approval of the $1 million appropriation request.
Is this paving list attached to the ordinance online?
It is not.
Is it possible to do that for people who would like to know?
Oh, we could make it available. As far as attaching it to the.
It's not an exhibit.
It's not an exhibit, but we can certainly figure out a way to make it available if anyone would request it.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is this exclusive list or could it be added to?
Oh, I'm sure it's somewhat dynamic. There could be some other projects. That's what's planned to be achieved as of right now in the paving season.
I know this is actual paving. This is not patching, right? This is actual paving work.
Right.
Okay. Because I know that there's gonna, the two roads off of, I can't think of it, St. Joseph's, St. Joseph's additions and Sawmill Run are getting a lot of torn up streets because of all the traffic that's going through here, even though it's not a main thoroughfare right now. The work that's being done down there. So I know, I talked to the city engineer and I know we're gonna have some problems there. But I just wanted to differentiate whether or not this will be part of that funding or not.
It could be. So if there are some smaller patching projects that need to be pursued, we'll work with the city engineer to determine which ones he wants to tackle and we'll find funding to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
How are we doing on materials costs?
I don't know off the top of my head what the asphalt price is. I think it's up from last year. Not dramatically to my recollection, though.
So it shouldn't have that big a bearing on what we can get done, right?
Well, no. A wider or a more significant issue there is designating what work the city might choose to do with its own workforce. So these projects have been put out to forbid, some of these are being performed by milestone. So the costs that come in there may be very, a little bit from what our initial expectations were or the engineers estimate were, but I think, I think things are pretty, pretty well refined now. We know what we're gonna get.
Just a little, why don't you guys talk to this West Lafayette and the county and buy your own paving machine?
We do have our own paving machine. And we've begun to do more work of this type with our own forces.
I'm loving it.
Any other comments from council? Thank you, Mr. Deal.
Thank you.
Comments from the audience regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next ordinance for first.
We need a public.
Oh, we do need a public hearing. Okay, so that would be August 7th? Okay, so we need to entertain a motion for a public hearing on August 7th, 6:01 PM. Mr. Snyder?
So moved.
Mr. Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Okay, our next, our first reading, excuse me, is ordinance 2023-26.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tippecanoe County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R2U to NBU, 1300 Howell Street, the 4th Offset LLC, Dishner.
Mrs. Hessian Wies?
I move for hearing ordinance 2023-26, excuse me, on first reading. Mr. Brown?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mundon?
Ryan Mundon with Riley and Teeter and Schreier here on behalf of 4th Offset LLC. As mentioned, we're requesting a rezone from R2U to NBU for the purpose of making this property legally conforming. It's currently a commercial on the front with residential behind and above. The intended use is gonna remain the same. The intended use is gonna remain the same, we're just gonna comply with the zoning ordinance. So our client owns five other properties in this neighborhood, one commercial, four residential. He's interested in revitalization and improvements to this neighborhood, and that's the intent here, is to get a commercial tenant in the building and eliminate some vacancy here. So area plan staff recommended approval, commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, we would request your approval as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comments from council?
I just had a member of APCL, so we looked this over, and it is just a technical issue, really, so.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you, Mr. Munden. Comments from the audience over ordinance 2023-26? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Our final ordinance for first reading is ordinance 2023-27.
An ordinance to amend ordinance 2022-36, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2023, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments.
Mrs. Williamson?
I move here and approve ordinance 2023-27.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Charlesney?
The amendment to the salary ordinance that you have in front of you today is to add a fourth facilities maintenance position within the waterworks. This is a request that was made by Waterworks Superintendent Steve Moore, given the needs of the department. It is a position that will be funded through a vacant position that is not being, that will not be filled, so it is not gonna request any additional funding to fill this, so it'll be transferring from one position that's unfilled to this fourth maintenance position.
Thank you. Comments from council? Comments from the audience in ordinance 2023-27? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Onto resolutions, we first have resolution 2023-20.
A resolution confirming the designation of a certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application for property tax abatement, Kentland Bank Real Estate.
Mr. Clinker?
I move here, resolution 2023-20 on first and final reading.
Mrs. Nargie?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Carson?
Yes, good evening, Dennis Carson, City Lafayette Economic Development Director. As you know, tax abatement requests are a two-step process, so this is the confirmatory resolution for the established and economic revitalization area for the Snowy Owls project that's being undertaken by Area 4 and Keller Development, and they are requesting a 10-year tax abatement, and this will provide affordable senior housing for low and moderate income households, so we're requesting approval.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Comments from council? Comments from the audience? Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on resolution 2023-20?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Finally, resolution 2023-21?
A resolution of Lafayette Common Council Annual Tax Abatement Compliance Round Two.
Mr. Snyder?
Madam President, I move to hear resolution number 2023-21.
Thank you, Mr. Munden.
Second.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Yes, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. These are the last compliances for tax abatement for this year. These are companies that requested extension of their property tax filings, so that's why they're coming to you now. They've all been reviewed by the Redevelopment Commission. These companies have all met their pledges and commitments and such, so they were requesting approval for the compliances.
Thank you. Comments from council? Comments from the audience over resolution 2023-21? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call vote?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees this evening? Reports of special committees? Are no reports by the mayor this evening? Miscellaneous in new business? Reports of councilpeople? Yes?
I would just like to make a comment about some of the comments that were made earlier and take exception to the fact that the mayor of this city is a very reputable person, and on behalf of him, who is not here this evening to speak for himself, I've known him to be a very honest and reputable person, and his word has always been taken literally when he gives it. And so to infer that somehow he's making dirty deals under the table, I find to be offensive. So I just wanted that to go on record.
Thank you. And we are moving on to the public comment portion of the evening. All people approaching the podium should state their name and address, and your comments will be limited to three minutes. All participants will be required to maintain a high level of civility, respect, and courtesy for everyone present. Any participant after being advised who persist in discourteous, excuse me, discourteous or hostile manner which may disrupt the meeting will be asked to leave or escorted out. The microphone is open for public comment.
Good evening. My name is Monica Casanova. I live at 1007 North 9th Street. I'm also the trustee for Fairfield Township, but I'm also here as a community member. I'm part of a concerned citizenry who has witnessed time and time again landlords who care not a whit about the tenants they house. I'm not talking about all landlords, but there are landlords who are exploiting the market. They buy up properties in economically distressed neighborhoods, hike up rent, and rent to the most vulnerable. Often, the housing is subpar and unhealthy for its tenants. When they are brought to the carpet either by tenants or the city, they make little or no attempt to address the issue. They find excuses to kick out tenants and turn around to rent the property all over again. We need to hold these landlords accountable. They cannot enrich themselves at the expense of those who cannot speak up or have nowhere to go. As a first step, I suggest that the building officials and code administration, BOC, adopt rental inspection checklist similar to those found in West Lafayette and other municipalities. These publicly accessible documents would help renters understand the types of violations that are covered under city code and assist them in filling out the housing inspection request form. I would ask that the city engineer's office update and promote their available material on rental code enforcement so that more citizens can avail themselves of the services. As a second step, I would suggest that the city modify relevant codes and procedures to make it easier for tenants to request a housing inspection. Currently, the form indicates that requests will be denied if the rent is overdue, they are in litigation with the landlord, or they are in the process of moving. If the tenant is unaware of remedies supplied by the city, they may inadvertently eliminate this option in the process of trying to resolve the situation themselves. As scrupulous landlords may also start the eviction process in order to avoid an inspection. Thank you.
Thank you. You can hold the microphone, you don't need to get up.
My name is Angela Moody. I am here because I had an issue with the landlord, Charles Lee. Landlords should be held accountable and make sure the rentals are in good condition. You should also not have to jump through so many hoops to get an inspection. Due to the conditions of the property I was staying in, I had to stay in a tent in the backyard. It caused my breathing issues, my seizures, and my chest pain to all flare up. After leaving, I struggle to walk more than 50 feet now. I have to use a wheelchair to get around because I have trouble breathing. No one should ever live in those conditions. To put it to a stop, landlords need to be held accountable and maintain healthy, livable conditions. We also have other landlords in this town that are not as bad as Mr. Lee, but their properties need to be checked and brought up. Brent Parks is another, 'cause I rented from him as well. He let a sewer line bust below my apartment and let human waste sit down there.
Thank you.
I didn't write anything, I don't know. I've never been to one of these, I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous, a little nervous. My name is Morgan Rose, and I stay at Econo Lodge. I was the one that was in the paper Sunday. I just wanted to, I don't really know how to do this. Judges will pass out evictions without necessarily even listening to what us tenants have to say. We used buckets for two months to use the bathroom because we didn't have a toilet. We didn't have water, we didn't have heat. I have, my son is now three, but I had a one and a two-year-old at the time that suffered and was in winter coats and snow boots in our house. It was so cold. Charles Lee did not care. His family was taken care of and mine was not, after numerous attempts to tell him that I could lose my children to CPS for not having what they need to survive. So I don't really know what to ask for besides maybe something coming into effect for people don't just get, 'cause I didn't get evicted. I was, went to eviction court and the judge ordered for me to move out because of the condition of the property. 20 minutes before I even was gone, there was someone looking at the property and moved in that day. Judges will go before them, and it's like landlords are always right, and they're not. And then when we have to go get a new place, we can't get a new place because we have an eviction. So my kids suffered, my kids suffered through a lot through this, and I just, I just want something to be changed, and I don't know what to ask for. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Copeland, I've lived at 1018 North Street for more than 40 years. Whenever the topic of rental property and property inspection comes up, we hear conversation about property rights, and no one can tell me what I can do with my own property. But I want to give you a different perspective. If you live in the city of Lafayette and you want to raise chickens in your backyard, and you want to slaughter them and butcher them and put them in freezer to feed your family, there's nothing to keep you from doing that. But if you want to put those chickens into commerce... All right. My mistake, all right? But if you want to put those chickens into commerce, if you want to sell those chickens to somebody else to feed their family, now they're subject to all sorts of rules and regulations and inspections, and the same thing should apply here. If you own your own home and you want to live there with holes in the roof and mold on the walls and plumbing that doesn't always work, that's your prerogative. But if you're gonna put that house into commerce, if you're gonna put it into the rental market, you should be obligated to provide sound structure, workable electric, and functional plumbing. If the city of Lafayette, if all of you are genuinely committed to improving the quality of life of the citizens of Lafayette, improving the quality of the rental housing stock has to be part of that. Improving the quality of life of the citizens of Lafayette includes all the citizens, including those who rent.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here this evening. I've been in two or three of these homes to help inspect it, and I have to agree that it's a situation that is critical. However, the mayor can't do anything about it. You folks are not able to do that. So it has to be a state bill that comes down, and I understand that. So I just wanted to say that I've discussed this with the mayor, and really, his hands are tied. There's no really restriction that you folks can do that I understand that will stop this or maybe force them to sell or fix them immediately. So I'm feeling for these people that in good faith want to live in a rental house and don't have any other options right now, so I just wanted to let you know that if you have ideas for the state to suggest bills that you go through that will monitor this or make a change, I'm happy to do that for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Nancy Marshall. I live at 21 North 27th Street in Lafayette, in our Colombian Park neighborhood, and I've talked to Melissa, and I've talked to Jackie. Okay, there are 13 houses on our block, and three are owned by separate negligent landlords. I imagine that there are numerous irresponsible landlords in Lafayette, not only a few. In addition to the horrible circumstances endured by some of the tenants of these rental units, there is a real burden put on responsible homeowners who live by this sort of property in terms of quality of life and potential decline of property value. I looked online and discovered that the town of Clarksville, Indiana passed a rental inspection ordinance last year, which went into effect at the beginning of 2023. It's modeled after Bloomington's ordinance, but modified to stay within the limits of what Indiana State Code allows. Among other things, the ordinance requires landlords to show proof of an inspection before they are issued a certificate that permits them to rent their property. This ensures that a tenant will not unknowingly sign a lease for unsafe rental property. I've brought a hard copy of Clarksville's ordinance along with contact information for the town manager, who, by the way, I talked to quite a bit, he was real interested in talking about his ordinance, and in contact information for, also for their building commissioner, who knows more about it than he does. I'm asking Lafayette City Council to read the ordinance and consider creating something similar for Lafayette, and sorry for having to read, I don't public speak well, but I'll say, for what I was saying about quality of life, and it's not to disparage any of the tenants, but there have been, in several of the rentals near us, convicted felons who have drugs in their house, and these landlords aren't inspecting anything. If you call them and tell them, they don't care, and it isn't only our infamous Charles Lee. The one in particular that bothers me, I won't mention a name, but is a doctor, a lawyer who's married to a doctor and lives in a really fancy house in Buck Creek, but couldn't care less what I live across the street from. I mean, if he would just fix the place up, which I know is off the topic, but anyway. I did bring this just for whoever, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Thanks to save you having to look online. So, that's all.
Thank you.
My name is Sherry McLaughlin. I live at 1620 North 13th Street. Charles Lee owns the property in the back of my house in the alley. I see it from my driveway just about every day. It's always been a rental, but since Mr. Lee took it over, it's gotten shabby. It's a mess. I see tons of turnover. People don't stay very long, and when they do go, often, there's a house full of household goods and furniture and garbage and trash all over the yard. Last year, this kind of came to a head, and I called the city, between my husband and I, we called at least 10 times in about four months. And when he was, when Mr. Lee was asked to clean this mess up, the people who came would take everyone around, everyone around's, you know, my neighbors, everyone's trashcans, their recycles, and they would fill them to the brim. So, you know, I don't want to dump that, I don't want to dump it out and make it worse, right? The other thing is, sometimes the people who mow the yards will just, if there's trash, they just mow over it. So we've got food and sometimes diapers, it's horrible, okay? And this man owns, at least according to the assessors... And this man owns, at least according to the Assessor's page, 88 properties. This is a very rich man that takes advantage of people who are really down on their luck. I guess I just kind of here to bear witness to this. Right now, it seems to have some stable people in the, in the house, but how long is that going to last? I would just also like to see something done about more inspections. I'd like to see people held accountable. And I'd just like to see, he, he owns several properties in the north end. We also have another one, there's a house between mine and one of his properties. Not as bad as this one, but again, it's always been a rental, but it just gets shabbier every year. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I would like to say that as far as this council and the city goes, nothing is more important than the safety and health of all of its citizens. I thank Mrs. Klinker for bringing up the state's willingness to address the unsafe building law. I do ask as a first step that all residents who feel that their living conditions are not safe or unstable in the building to please call the engineer's office directly and demand a housing inspection. I am going to ask Ms. Chasnick to speak to the current legislation in the city and how we're looking to see what else we can do under the state's mandates to make sure that you are all safe and cared for.
Yeah, and I agree with our council president. Habitable housing is a very important issue to us in the city of Lafayette, and it is something that my office and the engineer's office spends a large amount of time on, in particular, including with Mr. Lee in terms of inspections. When a tenant does call in and request a housing inspection, we do go out and inspect. We do go and come up with a list of repairs that are needed. And Ms. Marshall, I've talked to, well, through email because I didn't have a voice, but I've talked to Ms. Marshall, and the way that the state law is written when it talks about how a municipality can have a rental inspection program, you know, unfortunately, everything that comes after that statement really prohibits us from having an effective one primarily, in particular, there's no funding revenue. We're not allowed to charge any fees for such a program in a city of our size. Full-time rental inspection program would probably require at least three additional staff members, if not more. And so what we do do is we have to rely on the unsafe building law, which is when someone comes in and does a housing inspection, we do go out and inspect it. And if someone isn't going to make the repairs, we can't order that they do so. This is an issue that is one that is very important to me and to the city, that we're constantly looking for new or innovative ideas in a way to address. Ms. Casanova, I took down some of the notes. I will tell you that the policies and procedures for requesting rental inspections is on our agenda to discuss. That is something that's coming out of that, Ms. Klinker. And we could use some help from the state law. I know that tenants in particular, Indiana is one of only six states that does not have a rent escrow law that allows a tenant to withhold rent in the event that there's not habitable housing. I know legislation's been introduced this last year, if not in prior sessions as well, but it has not been adopted. And that's not from the cities, but just my overall looking at the rental program, that is where one place that Indiana does stand out, that we do have laws much different to do that, yeah. So I just want to, I appreciate everyone's comments today. I really, truly do. It is, again, an issue that is important to us and we are constantly looking for new ways to handle the situation. And I agree, nobody should live in housing that is not habitable or safe. They just shouldn't, so.
I also encourage everyone to go to, I think it's IGA.in.gov and find your representative so that you can contact them and talk about the importance of legislation that allows cities to implement more strength and mandate more actions from landlords within the city.
I agree. It's H27IGAI.in.gov. And the other one, Westside, is H26 with Representative Kendall and S22 for Senator Alting. S22@IGA.gov, same thing.
Thank you.
So we'll work together. Thank you.
May I say something else?
Yes.
I contacted Senator Alting's office and talked to his, I think it's an assistant, Ryan.
Ms. Marshall, would you like to come back up so we can get your comments on the record? That would be great. Thank you.
I contacted Senator Alting's office and talked to, I think it's an assistant of his name, Ryan somebody. Sorry, can't remember the last name. And after sending him Journal and Courier and Exponent articles, according to the assistant, Senator Alting reviewed them and said, "All of this is city and county issues. There's nothing the state can do about it." So just FYI.
And never say you just.
Exactly. And I, so, you know, and that's where, I did that actually before I wrote to you and before I called you, just because people like me, you know, we don't know where to start. We're not, we don't do this.
Once again, we're in a situation where we ain't going to make no friends. We need to do something about this. I've been hearing these stories for the last 15, 20 years where people are living in appalling conditions and there's nothing that we can do about it. It's time for us to try to get this fixed. And I'm, and our resolve is not going to be enough because, trust me, as soon as we start to do this, we're going to start to get phone calls from people who are going to be whispering in our ears, explaining to us that this is not something that we have any business doing and all that kind of stuff. But we are here for the citizens. We are here to protect the citizens from just this kind of foolishness. Because I'm here to tell you, there's people out there that will pimp these people into the ground simply because they know that folks who have just barely enough money to get housed will go anyplace to get housed. Anyplace. Because you hear people all the time, "Well, they don't have to live in places like that." Yes, they do. No choice. How much, you know, how much does it cost to get an apartment in this town? First month's rent, last month's rent, and then a security deposit? That comes out to somewhere close to $5,000 in a lot of cases to live in a trash heap. We need to fix this. Not if we can, we need to.
My name's Reynolds Tankso. I live at Econo Lodge or staying there. Can you guys use the fines for the city ordinance violations to fund some of that? Because I know that the fines can get hefty on some properties and city, I don't know what you guys do with the fines once they're higher and...
Right, and I'll just answer that. So there are, the city does, we do issue fines and penalties in certain circumstances. It certainly would help, but we don't collect that much in fines, that it would go very far to help fund that program. But I appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Klinker.
I have a question of, maybe the city attorney can answer. The first comment was related to them collecting other people's recycle and trash bins. What is their recourse on that? They call the police for an ordinance violation or what would, if someone's using their trash cans out of line?
That is, you know...
Trash cans are tied to the property.
The trash cans are tied to the property. You know, it's, it's not necessarily trespassing. You know, I'm not sure what the best answer would be. Oh, and Sheri, because this is the first that I've heard of that.
Would you like to approach the microphone?
There we go. Keep going.
Hear from the police chief.
Scott Dowdaway, police chief. There isn't a law of misdemeanor, illegal dumping. If you dump garbage in a receptacle that's not yours.
So should they call the non-emergency number?
They can. It's difficult to prosecute because you have to have a witness to see them do that. We have to actually witness that happen in order to make an arrest.
Are you able to accept, like, an iPhone video?
No, it has to be us in person seeing that happen. You can always make a report, but you can go online and make reports. That's the easiest thing that we have people do, is go online.
Okay.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then my second question was going back a few years and a little foggy, but the Board of Works can have our homes condemned or structures condemned, correct? And what's, is it inside, outside? How do they make that determination?
Yeah, we do have, we do have the Lafayette Hearing Authority, which does handle, and they actually, the enforcement arm of the unsafe building law. We use the unsafe building law for a range of things, including, you know, trying to get, order a rental to be repaired that doesn't meet code, up to structures that are unsafe and required to be demolished. But to reach that standard of demolition, the structure has to be unsafe and structurally unsafe and not capable of being repaired.
So that's the actual falling down structure, not mold or...
Right, right. But we do have, we do still have the ability under the unsafe building law to issue an order to repair, but on something like a habitability issue, it's not going to advance to demolition. That's a different nature of violation, different category.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that we did, the city actually did resolve our problem with the trash things. I believe the way it worked was I called the police. They, I think I called ordinances, they had me call the police. And they, they checked, they checked the numbers against our, and they marked them up and they put our address on them, and they did the same with my neighbors. So that was resolved. But there is one other thing I'd like to say, you know, I know that people who are living in these conditions can make that call and say, "Do this inspection," but there's a lot of fear in being poor and being at the mercy of a landlord and services. So it's not that easy. You know, it's good in theory, but it's not that easy to pick up the phone and worry about losing your home, such as it is. It's, you know, it's still shelter.
The main reason we need the residents to do it is so that the inspectors can gain access to the building.
Sure.
So they've got to work with the residents to find a time to go in and inspect it. So if they talk to the residents directly, then they can work out a plan to schedule that inspection and get into the building.
Right. And is there anything set that there, that these people cannot be retaliated against and kicked out because they made this?
That's what we're currently working to review.
There is protections for retaliation for making a housing inspection report, so that is in the law.
Okay, thank you.
Come on up to the microphone, please. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Antonio Robinson, Econo Lodge Hotel. What do you do when you're denied an inspection? Because we were denied an inspection by the Health Department and the engineers. So what do you do then?
I, I'm going to say that the reason for that was probably because of the existing policy that we have with regard to not being in litigation or behind in rent. And, you know, the reasoning behind that policy is, is the city has to be careful to not be brought in as a tool in certain, you know, arguments between landlords and tenants. But as I already stated, those are policies that we are currently reviewing to determine what we are going to do moving forward in terms of our parameters for inspecting upon a rental inspection program.
Right, because tenants have no rights.
That's what we're working to review the, redo the policy for, so that you cannot be denied an inspection when you call with concern.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Any other public comment this evening? I'll take a motion. Yes.
I think that the, having the chief of police come up here and talk about the fact they have to do this kind of stuff is very disturbing to me because them spending time doing that means that they're not doing something else that could save somebody else's life in another situation. And I don't know that we pay our police to do that. I do appreciate, however, that you do do that, chief. And I'm disturbed that citizens would have to live in these kinds of conditions. It's unconscionable and appalling. And unfortunately, we hear too much about deadbeat people who live in apartment complexes and tear them up. And we never hear about the fact that the landlords don't have responsibilities to their tenants as well. So I hope that this is something that will continue to be in the forefront and that we can get something worked out. I hate to hear, you know, it's not the state's fault, it's not the city's fault, because that's not what the residents want to hear. But I for one, and I think most of the city agrees that it's something that needs to be done, and we want to work very strongly within the law to get that done for you.
May I say one more thing? I also just wanted to say, when we first moved into Charles's lead property, he had a lock box on the door and he threatened to evict me less than 24 hours after I signed the lease because I refused to let people come into my house with my kids and my animals. So he said if I didn't leave the key outside for the real estate agent and the people to look at my place, that he was going to evict me and he didn't care about honoring my lease.
Final public comment from anyone? Mr. Klinker, entertain a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Marji?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Somebody tried to do it all over the internet. They have a picture of my name and my rental property.